It is now 5:01, May 16, 2017. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District and the City as Housing Assets Successor. May we have real call, please?
The member Gomez?
Good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy is absent from tonight's meeting. Councilmember Negrete?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox?
Yeah.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. Per Government Code Section 5495-4.3, state law prohibits the Council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The Council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. There is no one in the audience to address the Council. Therefore, I request Declaration of Closed Session Items by City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have seven items listed on closed session this evening. Item A is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9D2 and the facts and circumstances related to that are set forth on the agenda. Items B, C, E, F, G, and H are all actually related. They are all pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9D1. B and C on behalf of the City Council and E, F, G, and H on behalf of the Airport Authority. That litigation is the litigation between COMAV and the Airport Authority. The case, individual case numbers and case titles are all set forth on the agenda. To the extent there's reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the regular 6:00 PM meeting.
Thank you. At this time, we will recess to our closed session in a regular session convinced at 6:00 PM. It is now 6:01, May 16, 2017. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District and the City as Housing Assets Successor. May we have real call, please?
Councilmember Gomez?
Good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy is absent from tonight's meeting. Councilmember Negrete?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. May we have our closed session announcements by our City Attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had seven items on the agenda this evening for closed session. Item A was anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9D2 and the facts and circumstances related to that are set forth on the agenda. The other six items are all related. They are all pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9D1. Item B and C on behalf of the City. Items E, F, G, and H on behalf of the Airport Authority. That litigation, the case numbers and the case names are all set forth on the agenda. At this time, there is no reportable action with respect to any of the closed session items.
Thank you. At this time, we will have the invocation which will be delivered by Father Patrick Travers from Holy Innocents Church and then the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Police Chief John Schuler. So please stand.
Let's bow our heads and pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all who are gathered here this evening. We thank you for the City Council and their ability to involve in useful work and the responsibility they have undertaken. We ask you to give them wisdom to govern wisely amid conflicting interests and issues of our city and our nation, always being aware of the welfare and true needs of our community. Give them the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, instill a need for justice and confidence in the agenda set before them, always remembering what would please you and then what would benefit the constituents of the City of Victorville. Give the City Council peace in their lives and joy in their task. We thank you for the freedom to embrace you here and your many abundant blessings. In your name, in your blessed name, we pray, amen.
This evening, I do have a presentation of a proclamation for the 2017 Public Works Day. And I also have a presentation to Sheriff's Deputy Jeff Dean. And I will come down and do the presentations. The first presentation will be for Public Works Day. Well, I believe it's Sheena, Sheena Romo and Erica King. Can you please come up and join me? Sheena and Erica are here this evening representing the 68 employees of the Victorville Public Works Department. I'm honored to join the rest of the City Council in proclaiming May the 18th Public Works Day in Victorville. Your service is integral to maintaining our infrastructure and improving our quality of life. We appreciate your hard work and efforts to make Victorville the great city that it is. I thank you so very much and I do have a proclamation for you. On behalf of the Victorville City Council, I present this to you.
Good job, Doug. Okay.
Thank you so very much. Would you like to say something?
Oh, I'm just looking forward to another great year.
Exactly, for the kids first and then the community. I know, that's the way I think. In a few years, they will be wonderful. Thank you so much for such a wonderful job and I always look forward to all the events that Public Works has and the picnic and everything. Thank you. Good work, continue doing it. Now Deputy Jeff Dean, will you please come up? Good evening. Nice to meet you. Tonight, I have the pleasure of honoring Sheriff's Deputy Jeff Dean. Last weekend, Deputy Dean was working a traffic accident in Old Town when he was approached by a young man in need of assistance. That 20-year-old named Jacob was here as part of a traveling magazine sales company when his coworkers stole his wallet and cellphone. Jacob was alone, afraid, and far from his home in Washington. Deputy Dean jumped into action in assisting the young men and calmed his fears and gave him a sense of comfort and safety. He used his own money to buy Jacob dinner and put him up at a local hotel for the evening. The next day on his day off, Deputy Dean drove Jacob to San Bernardino and purchased a bus ticket to get him home to Washington on Mother's Day, all with his own money. Deputy Dean, on behalf of the entire City Council, thank you for going above and beyond to help Jacob. Your generosity and caring for Jacob embody the ideals of duty and service. You have brought great pride to the City of Victorville and our police department. I am pleased to honor you with this recognition. This certificate of recognition is presented to Sheriff's Deputy Jeff Dean in recognition of your generosity and support of an individual in need and for your honorable duty and service to the City of Victorville. Signed, Mayor Gloria Garcia.
One more. Excellent.
Thank you so very much. Would you like to say?
My captain told me not to, but... I just wanted people from other states to know that here in Victorville, it's not such a bad town. And wanted to treat somebody else how I'd want to be treated if I was in their shoes. That's all.
We need to do more of this to recognize our police officers for everything that they do for us and to maintain our safety. We do not have... Let me back up. Madam Clerk, will you please present the agenda to the Council and any revisions to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor Garcia. Persons who wish to address the Council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the Council Chamber's lobby and give it to the City Clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-4.3, state law prohibits the Council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The Council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments made during the written communications or public comments sections of the agenda are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a City Council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the Council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Penal Code Section 5495-7.9, Penal Code Section 403. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the Council and there's one revision to tonight's agenda and that is to item number D5 and that is a list of public official appointments. And that is the only revision for tonight's agenda, Mayor Garcia.
Thank you. This evening, we do not have any appeal hearings. So we move on to public hearings. The first item, B1, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against abandonment of a portion of Eagle and a portion of Nevada Avenue. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council adopt Resolution Number 17-015 to vacate, abandon a portion of Eagle and a portion of Nevada Avenue subject to the reservations stated within the resolution.
Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing. And I will take testimony from the public. I do not have any cards, is that correct?
No cards.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? I don't see anyone. So I close the public hearing. And at this time, I will request Councilmember comments. Do we have any? I don't see anyone that wants to speak on this. So may we have an action on this item?
Mayor, motion that we approve Resolution 17-015.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Negrete. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Now we move on to item B2. A public hearing to hear arguments for and against amending Chapter 2.20 of the Victorville Municipal Code. Mayor requests City Clerk read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council open the public hearing, take testimony, close the public hearing, introduce ordinance number... There is a typo on the agenda. It's ordinance number 2367 rather than 2357 for adoption and first reading by title only and provide initial comments on the draft Council Policies and Procedures Manual.
Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing. And again, it's a time for testimony from the public. I don't have any cards. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? I don't see anyone. So I close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
This is kind of a procedural question. I think this is going to require discussion by all the members of the Council, a lot of input and probably at least a study session. We cannot meet in private and don't do so, but we need to discuss this together so we can have agreement. And then we'll bring this back, probably with amendments. And then we would have to have another public hearing. Wouldn't it be more appropriate to continue the public hearing and have a study session?
I have no problem having a study session. That makes a lot of sense, but the public hearing is for the purposes of the code amendments which are set forth in the ordinance. To the extent you want to make revisions to that, it would also be appropriate to continue it. The purpose of the ordinance right now is to eliminate conflicting provisions and outdated provisions of the municipal code. But as you know, ordinances take several days before they... In fact, close to 45 to 50 days before they become effective. So this was to get the ball rolling with respect to the ordinance to clean up the municipal code. Certainly, the manual, to the extent, you know, we're going to invite comments on that and to the extent you want to have a workshop, that makes total sense. You could do it either way. You could basically continue this hearing if there's going to be further changes to the ordinance or you could introduce tonight, which starts the clock running.
Is there a public hearing for the adoption of the procedural rules?
Not required, but certainly it would be a public meeting at which time it would be adopted.
A public meeting?
Correct, but not formally a public hearing.
This simply does away with the conflicts, is it?
Correct. This gets the clock started on getting rid of provisions in the municipal code that are outdated and/or in conflict with policies you've already adopted.
I then have no objection to closing the public.
At this time, I close the public hearing. And any comments from Councilmembers?
Yes, since this isn't going to be motioned, I want to go line by line. We won't be having any workshops and the time starts ticking. So I'm fully prepared to give what I was going to give on this item. This item is the Victorville Municipal Code, Chapter 2.20.
Councilmember Gomez, if I might... My understanding is the only thing that is closed tonight is the public hearing and I do anticipate a motion on the ordinance. That is not going to have any effect on the manual itself and I understand there seems to be a desire on behalf of the Council to have a workshop or some other thing on the manual.
Yeah, so what I understood from Cox's explanation and yours was if I don't do the hearing today, the time starts ticking. And to me, it's really important to have a say. So if you want to re-explain what you just said and then I can clarify with my understanding?
Certainly. If you have comments relative to the revisions to the municipal code that would be appropriate at this time. If you have comments relative to the Procedures Manual, again, I haven't heard from the Council yet, but I would understand that the Council would be interested in doing a workshop to consider revisions and/or adjustments to the policy manual. So two different actions.
So then this would set back the municipal code, the ordinance that's in play?
Correct.
And the policy manual, all three?
No. All this is doing right now is starting the clock ticking on provisions in the municipal code which are either outdated or in conflict with existing policies you already have. My understanding is the Council wants to have further discussion on the policy manual, which I welcome because in my staff report, I even asked for further direction from this Council on the policy manual. All we want to do is start the clock ticking in terms of getting revisions to the municipal code which are in conflict.
So then what you're telling me is that Chapter 2.20 has been slashed. I have a lot of comments on everything that's been slashed from interruptions and a lot of parliamentary procedures that have been violated by every single Councilmember in this dais. And there's a major importance for me to bring those in light because all of those that are being slashed are being rewritten specifically to shut me down. So if we're not going to be speaking in terms of the municipal code?
I haven't heard a motion yet.
Like comments on that? I'd like to take that opportunity. So go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's up to the presiding officer. That'd be appropriate. If you have comments on the municipal code, then this would be the time to voice them.
So then I'm going to be speaking on the municipal code and that's just as lengthy because I go through every single line. because I go through every single line looking at the 1971 policy or the code that has been implemented.
Ms. Gomez, that's why we're having a workshop?
Well, that's why I asked him and he said that portion of it would not be spoken. It would be the policy manual, the ordinance, the municipal, the municipal code was, it's going to be slashed. So that I'm asking for clarification.
If you want to do this in a workshop environment and you have concerns over the municipal code revisions, then it would be appropriate to continue the municipal code here, portion of this. Need not necessarily be a public hearing. You can continue the public hearing if you want and do both in a workshop. I'm fine with that as well.
What are the ramifications of doing that?
Up to the council to decide if you want to do that.
I'm asking, what are the ramifications if we do that?
If there's no introduction of the ordinance?
We discontinue the hearing.
If there's no introduction of the ordinance tonight, then the clock has not started. So nothing's happened.
So if council on a majority vote decides to start the clock on this ordinance, what is it doing to the policy manual, the municipal code, and the resolutions that have, have already passed and will be passed after today?
It is not doing anything until such time as it becomes effective and it does not become effective until the council has agreed upon a policy manual that replaces it.
Okay, so then this is protecting me right now if I decide to what it, what it is that you just said. Is that correct? Because I'm not going to jeopardize my time limits and the things that I like to speak during a public hearing.
Right, but a lot of those things, there are already policies in place?
Okay.
That govern those activities right now that the council, as a, as a body, has adopted by a majority vote. So this isn't doing anything to affect that, but if this council wants to put both items over to a workshop, I have no problem with that.
Okay, so does council have an issue with putting both items on future workshops or the next workshop? Is there a motion on the floor?
I don't believe there's a motion, no.
Okay, so then how are we going to proceed with this? As you did suggest, if both are saved for a later date as a workshop and if that motion isn't made, I'm waiting for someone to make that motion.
I will make that motion to, to schedule a workshop as soon as reason would be possible. And, uh, this would be on the ordinance. I know the ordinances have some conflicts that, that should be approved, but if somebody's nervous about it, then continue that also along with the procedural rules. If, if that makes people more comfortable, why not? That's my motion.
I'm going to second it.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Now we have the consent counter. Consent counter items C1 through C12 can be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for discussion.
I'm going to be pulling C6 through, C10. C6 through C10.
I understand, C6 through?
Yeah, C6, 7, 8, 9, 10.
Move approval, uh, C1 through C5 and C11 and C12.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Before I submit my vote, can you explain if that was a substitute motion that just took place? I'm sorry?
On a consent calendar, that was fine. Basically, what's happened is the items have been pulled, so that was just a motion to approve all of the other things that were on the agenda, exclusive of the items that you have pulled.
So basically, which ones are being pulled?
Items?
C6 through C10.
C6 through C10.
Is that what you requested?
And then I heard Mr. Negretti, um, give other consent calendars to be pulled.
Those are items, no, he wanted, the motion included items C11 and C12. You didn't say that you had a problem with those.
No, I, I don't have an, oh, he's not pulling C11 and C12. He wants to continue the motion?
He included those in his motion to approve.
I'm looking at my piece here and I also like to pull C12. Those, that deals with parks and reclaimed water. So C6 through C10 and also C12.
So would you amend your motion then to do everything except for those?
Madam Mayor, move approval, the consent calendar, C1 through C5, uh, and C11.
I second that. That meets all the requirements.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
So if I may, I'm going to start my comments unless someone else has something they want to add. I know I pulled these items.
You are allowed to go ahead.
Right now, there's a list of checks and one can't gauge where they went. There's no way that if some auditor came, that we would see what these dates were unless there was a list to cross-reference them. We don't know what departments were, these checks were pulled from. If we go to payroll, there's, you start looking at the list. I don't know, I see the list of checks, but I don't know if these numbers next to the ID number is representative of an identity for an actual individual that works here or what it is, so I'm kind of concerned with that. And I need some assistance is if we're going to provide some cross-referencing. Uh, this is also part of the budget planning, which we just had a couple of hours ago. And I'd like to see a list of the money that's budgeted for this, for these items. There's C6, 7, 8, 9, and 10 all have the same. I know C10 is, uh, commercial and we've talked about that and you guys are going to add some kind of tag so I can, we can reference them back. Uh, for example, I gave an example of $2 million, so for the year that would, it was this year that we budgeted $2 million, for example, where we had about $2 million and this wasn't a loan just leaving itself. So I'm asking kind of like for a check and balance system. And if there's an over budget, like, I'd like to visually see where the money is going. So do you know where the ID numbers are referencing to?
You're talking about the payroll demand schedule. Each one of those is, uh, an employee ID number? Not information that we provide to the public?
Okay. So we, we're a governing body and we have a lot of procedures and when I look at these, I try to tag to see if, you know, what is the $25? Does it matter? What is the 150? Does it matter? I don't think people get paid $50 every two weeks, so I want to see if I can cross-reference, um, these items. I'm not asking you to give me confidential information, just maybe if you put something department with the different departments, because we have so many departments, if I can gauge where the mass amount of money from what department is coming, that would help me in a fiscal report, be able to take accountability of how our budget is either increasing or decreasing. Is that something that can be done?
I'm sure something can be done to add departments. We talked, uh, yesterday about doing that with the commercial demand schedule and both Keith and I have had discussions with admin services about, uh, doing that. Uh, not sure the exact process just yet to modify the report, but it certainly is something that's doable.
Okay, so now for C7. So for C7, we have about $791,000. That's for the advices and then we see checks. Checks about $12,119.75, which leaves about 803,354.71. The fiscal impact that I'm looking at this one is about $1.2 million. So I'm wondering what happens with that money that was left over? Are we allocated, are we allocating this in a general fund or are we just leaving it there so it's pre-budgeted? What happens to that money?
I, I don't understand what money you're talking about. These are, this is a list of, uh, payroll checks, uh, that went to, uh, all the employees of the city. It would have come from virtually every fund, uh, that, uh, that we have. A lot of these checks would have been split among multiple funds, uh, depending on, uh, what department they work in, what their, what their role is, uh, such as Mr. Metzler, being over Public Works, much of his salary is paid by Public Works, by the utilities, by engineering, uh, and by economic development, uh, and several others. So, um, there's not a way to list every single fund for every individual check. The agendas would be hundreds of pages longer.
Right, I'm not, I'm not asking for that. What I'm asking is I look at the, uh, fiscal impact, the allocation of 1.2 roughly. So that means that you budgeted this amount. Is that not right? Okay, is your, my...
Is, are you asking me or Mr. Metzler?
Well, he shook his head yes, so...
Well, uh, I'm in the discussion right now, so I'll answer.
Okay.
Um, the $1.2 million is not a number that we budget.
Okay.
All of these payrolls, all these checks are a part of hundreds of different budgets. So the, the number that you see right there, $1.2 million, well, does not appear in the budget somewhere. We didn't budget this exact dollar amount for period March 11th through March 24th. And we do budget on an annual basis for all of the salary of all of the employees and that is paid out of the budget. So yes, this money is budgeted, but you won't see this number budgeted anywhere.
Okay, so when I look at the total checks and I have 12,000 here and then I look at the total advices, I have a total of, um, $700,091. When I subtract that, I have 803. So I'm, I was wondering if there was some way that I can track fiscally what's happening there with that amount of money? Because if you budget a certain amount to pay your employees, what's happening to the rest? So I'm literally trying to understand basically the vendor payments and all these advices and checks that you have here, because I have no way of tracking the ID numbers or, uh, department. So I'm trying to get an assistance to do that so I can keep track of finances at a larger level.
So each of those employee numbers represents a different employee. Some of them receive checks, very few, um, but then at the very end, there's electronic vendor payments, which is included in here. The IRS, 154,813.73. State taxes, deferred comp, CASDU, which actually I'm not even sure what that is myself. Uh, and then per is as 210,831.89. So between all of those, uh, and then between the checks and the advices, um, that should total the 1.21 million dollars.
Okay, so as long as you break it out per department, that would make it easier for me to go through this. Is that okay?
No, it's not.
You can't break it out by department?
I cannot, no. Um, because this isn't done by a department basis, it's done by an employee ID number. And not every employee has a single department. So like I said, Keith would have, I don't know, Keith, you got five or six different funding sources for your salary? So it, it's not possible. Uh, we'd be happy to, to sit you down, not sharing employee names or any other confidential information to try to get you a better understanding of it.
All right, that makes sense then.
Okay.
Okay, and then C12? I was talking to the different community members and some of them brought a few concerns. Uh, will the reclaimed water be coming out of sprinklers or faucets? What, what's going to guarantee that a child is not going to be drinking out of a sprinkler? Maybe, you know, it's summer and the parents would go out there and it's reclaimed water. Um, what are we doing to safeguard it? For instance, there's a school nearby. It's an elementary school. There's a park right adjacent to the school and definitely the school's right adjacent to the park and there's nothing to determine how any, how anyone will not be drinking this water. So do we have like an impact plan for these, for the reclaimed water not going in, you know, the water isn't going into farms or barns, but it's literally going into a park field on Schmidt. So I'm just concerned about parents bringing their kids, not understanding that that could be reclaimed water coming out possibly of sprinklers. Um, another thing is, can it be possible for, like I said, the parents maybe bringing their concerns? So as a mom, I have an eight-year-old, I'm a little bit concerned about that and I know that some water has at times had parasites and this can be considered a health issue, so I'm bringing that to your attention.
So yes, if, if I might, I'll try to address some of those. Um, and first, this is dealing with a notice of completion, um, and so the notice of completion is basically drawing conclusion to the construction of the reclaimed water landscaping system out at Schmidt Park. Um, and a lot of what you asked question about, in fact, is stuff that's dealt with on the design side of the construction project. Uh, there are a number of regulations and a number of considerations that go into where water sprays and how it sprays. Uh, for example, to answer your question specific to, uh, drinking faucets, those are not interconnected with the purple piping system, but to show you the consideration that goes into, um, the rules and regulations in designing these systems, we have to make sure when they're designed that things like overspray aren't splashing onto, um, uh, drinking fountains. Notwithstanding that, those are all additional safety precautions because the water that is coming out of the purple pipe system is all, uh, gone through a, it's actually treated to what's considered a Title 22 standard. Uh, it's actually disinfected, uh, through a UV disinfection process, so, um, you know, it's commonly said that reclaimed water, um, is actually, uh, treated to a standard that's actually drinkable if, if you're willing to do it. And in fact, that's becoming a, um, a much larger statewide discussion is the use of reclaimed water for drinking. That's not the case here. There's a lot of protections that were put into, uh, the system when it was designed. Um, as to, um, drinking from the sprinklers, I believe we try to do as much as we can about watering at night in off-peak hours. And then I do know as much that we try to put as much signage as possible, uh, just to make the public additionally aware, uh, that reclaimed water is being used to water the ball fields as opposed to potable.
Water at night's coming from the sprinklers then, right?
I'm sorry?
The water then would at night be coming out from the sprinklers?
The water at Schmidt Park, uh, would be coming out of the sprinklers that's reclaimed, yes.
What could we do to prevent that? I, I mean, I don't know if there's a water irrigation system? I, I just don't want to be liable for a parent coming saying, "Blanca, you voted on this and we, you knew at night that this reclaimed water..." Anyway, XXX, I'm responsible for a wide community as all of us are.
Um, well, we built the, uh, purple pipe system to convey reclaimed water for the watering of the lawn, the watering of the grass. So that's what the city council approved. Uh, that's what we designed. Uh, we designed it with all the safety precautions required of us by probably the state water board. As far as what somebody can claim, I, I guess anybody can claim anything, um, but we've done everything with this system that's required, uh, from the regulatory agencies that oversee the use of reclaimed water for parks.
Okay, thank you. That was all I had.
Move approval of C6 through C10 and C12?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Now we move on to, uh, written communications. Item D1, award construction agreement to Los Angeles Contractor, Inc. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the Board of Directors approve the award of a construction agreement to Angeles Contractor, Inc. for ADA compliance renovations at SCLA Building 728, project number CCH17-104, for the amount not to exceed $49,346.89.
Thank you. Are there any discussion questions? No? Send a heavy motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Ms. Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Item D2, ratification of U.S. Customs Memorandum of Agreement and Approval of Customs Computer System Upgrade at SCLA. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the Board of Directors ratify the attached U.S. Customs and Border Protection Memorandum of Agreement in the amount of $140,000, including $123,438 for regularly scheduled service and $16,562 for estimated overtime and approve the related U.S. Customs Host Computer System Upgrade Project Number CCH16-097 at a final not to exceed cost of $25,612.22.
Thank you.
I have comments.
You're allowed to comment.
Okay, so for this item, I just really, I'm looking for clarification. There's approximately $140,000 paid to U.S. Customs. Uh, 16,000 of it is for overtime and so about 123,000 is for rendering services, so it's a total of 140,000. What is it that we're ratifying? Is it the overtime? Uh, I need some clarity on that. And also, um, it says something about every three years, the maintenance of computer system is about 25,000. So I really need it, it, the clarification, is it for the 25,000? Uh, I don't think it's for the overtime, but if you can clarify.
Uh, yes, uh, council member, this item is... Yes, Councilmember, this item is actually in large part a cleanup item. We have actually entered into agreements with the U.S. Customs dating back to 1999, and paying their invoices and them providing services has been fairly routine and customary over the years. It's my understanding that this item is effectively ratifying for the entire amount, the, the entire amount that is budgeted. I think the issue here is that we have the amounts budgeted, but we just did not enter into this contract for the current fiscal year. U.S. Customs requires the actual contract to be signed, notwithstanding the fact that they've been providing the service and we've been paying for the service. So effectively what this does is it authorizes the execution of the contract. To answer your question specifically as to the 123 for service, that's for the actual manpower. We're also approving the overtime of 16,562. And we're also authorizing, though it was authorized in the budget, this contract is, is causing for the payment of 25,612 for a computer system that actually has already been installed in this fiscal year. So altogether, it's really just housekeeping as it relates to the contract.
Okay, and then, I, I was looking at the site map. There's a network server, I'm thinking that is serves for project CCH 16-097. So is it to cover the entire space of 728, which is the admin for SCLA? Or was it just to limit, just for the hub of the networking?
This, this, when it comes to this contract, it is for computer system and equipment specific to the U.S. Customs independent, not even tied into our network system. So it's just so that they can operate independently within their own department, I guess.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Can I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Item D3, approval of settlement agreement and release between Baldi Brothers, Inc. and SCLA. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the Board of Directors approve a settlement agreement and release between Baldi Brothers, Inc. and the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority in the not-to-exceed amount of 282,000 for reimbursement of wages, fines, and fees associated with runway 321 reconstruction project number CC 14-007 and the requisite additional appropriation.
Thank you. Questions?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Item D4, training and continuing education for planning commissioners. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council discuss and take possible action in regard to formal training and continuing education for planning commissioners.
Since this is my item, I like to comment on it.
You're allowed.
The league has a planning commissioners academy that just occurred in March. Thank you for that information, Keith. Any education that's geared to train our planning commissioners will be better there to prepare them. If and when trainings are available, I suggest that the planning commissioner have a small budget to give that voluntary desire for the planning commissioners to attend. I'm aware that currently the planning commissioning section doesn't have such budget, so this is why it's on the agenda. When I went to the mayors and new council members, there was also something for planning commissioners. So I think that would be instrumental to not only the city, but the actual individuals that are getting all these planning commissionings and permits to go through the city.
This is for our city manager. My understanding is that they do get their training if, if necessary and required.
In, in the past, we've sent planning commissioners to training, yes. If it's a council's desire, it makes sense to send especially the new planning commissioners to the next training opportunity. It's usually two or $3,000 at the most.
Yeah, but I mean, if, if they need it, they go.
Yeah, we can put that in the next, next year's budget if just, I don't know if we even need a formal vote at this point, but we can certainly add that in. We're in the middle of budget discussions now.
Would, would it be acceptable if we just add it to the budget?
Of course, this, but that's what I was thinking, that would be added.
It's already something that they do. So it's not, not anything new.
With directions for the manager or staff to add this to the budget, is there necessary to take a motion?
It wouldn't be necessary. It seems like there's a consensus. If you want to have the formality of a motion, that's fine too. But I, I think staff has all the direction they want.
Everybody has direction to do so, so we don't need to do anything.
That's fine. We'll put it in.
So we'll skip that one. We'll go on to D5, reporting to council by meeting conference delegates and alternates. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council members who are appointed as delegates and alternates to attend meetings, conferences on behalf of the city be required to present a report in public on those meetings, conferences they attend.
This is also my item, if I can comment on that one.
You're allowed.
So for this one, ever since I've been here, I usually attend a meeting if I can't. Any other meetings that I, I am an alternate or not an alternate, cause I know the importance of what it is to hold an accountability for the community. And so we have a lot of delegates here at the dais that sit in these meetings. And I find it appropriate to disclose whether it's in one sentence, in two sentences, very briefly, what it is that occurred at meetings. For instance, for the Mojave Desert Air Quality Management District, Mayor Pro Temp Cox sits in that meeting. Sandbag, we have Jim Kennedy, who sits in that meeting. For a VVWR, Victor Valley Water, Wastewater Reclamation Authority, Jim also sits, sits on that one as a delegate. For Sandbag, Kennedy sits on that one. For VBTA, our transportation, Gloria Garcia, our mayor, sits on that one. And the other meeting, Mojave Desert and Mountain Recycling Joint Powers Authority, Gloria also sits on this. And each meeting does come with a, a small stipend, whether it's smaller just enough to get gas there, between a hundred dollars and 125 dollars, 75 dollars per meeting. So I only find it very natural for them to come and report back on such meetings, cause this would also help me understand what's happening at the VBTA level, WW, VVWR level. I have a lot of constituents that ask me questions, so it'd be beneficial for all of us to hear what's happening at those levels very briefly. So that's why this is on the agenda.
Does speak, Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
The policy that was adopted by the council some time ago is if you went to a meeting or conference with the city paid, then it was expected that you prove that you went to the meeting, report back to the council in a public meeting where the meeting was and what occurred. And that came about, quite frankly, because council members would go to, not the current council, would go to a meeting in San Francisco and never go to any meetings. And it was, it was, it became, at one point, I know when I was a staff member, I was expected to write what happened, which is wrong. There should be a report back to the council. However, Victor Valley Wastewater Authority meets right across the hall and it's a public meeting. And the public can attend. And there's no reason to report on what happened at a public meeting. It'd be tantamount, two weeks from now, for me to report what happened tonight. Public meeting, there's an agenda, the public is invited, they can speak, and those who are interested do so. And when the meeting is concluded, the official record of this meeting are the minutes that the clerk takes that's, that's adopted at the next meeting. Victor Valley Wastewater Authority, same thing. They have a meeting next month, they will approve the minutes. It's a public meeting, open to the public. Mojave Desert Air Quality Management District, VVWR happens to be Apple Valley, Hesperia, Victorville, and, and the county, County Service Area 64. We certainly get a report back because of some problems. But I happen to be the chair of the Air Quality Management District, Mojave Desert Air Quality Management District. That goes from the Colorado River to, it's the largest air quality management district in the state, to Imperial County, Riverside County. And again, it's a public meeting, one block away. Has an agenda, the public attends, and the official record of what occurred is the minutes that you adopt. I'd be more happy to have the minutes as a part of the agenda. But I don't know, it's a good idea, the whole public officials responsible. But I think we're going to have to nail down exactly what is supposed to be, what, what the real question is. Now, I agree, if the city sends a council member or a planning commission member away out of the area and pays mileage, affairs, expenses, and a fee, they ought to report back. But in VVWR, the city does not pay for the position, it's paid for by the agency. MDA-QMD is paid by the Air Quality Management District and fees that they collect throughout the desert. I, I've not, I, I, I like the idea, but I think it needs to be refined. I think we need to talk about this a little bit more. I think we need to probably put it in a policy form so that we know exactly what kind of a report in public is expected. If I was to make a report on a public meeting, I'd give you the minutes. And that's the official report. And that's what the legal report would be. But where you have a meeting as this council or, or planning commission, and it's published in the paper and there's an agenda, it wouldn't make any sense at the next meeting to report on what happened at this meeting. So I'm not sure where you're going with this. I, I endorse the effort. I think we just need to clarify it.
Well, the city's not paying us.
Pardon?
The city does not pay us.
No, the city doesn't pay.
The city's not paying us to attend this meeting.
The city doesn't pay any of these that was named.
The legal requirement is that you, you shall report at the next meeting if you are attending a meeting at city expense.
At city expense. It's not at city expense.
What was your question? You, you thought the city was paying us?
Well, you know, as elected officials, we get paid to be right here right now. I do see a figure, and thank you for clarifying, that the Mojave Desert Quality Management, the hundred dollars, Mr. Cox, that you get is not from the city of Victorville, but it's from the actual agency. So.
None of these are from the city.
Not, not VBTA, not any of them.
None of those paid by the city.
So this is paid for by each agency that we are required to wear the hat as successor RDA and all these other levels, right? All I'm asking, to be honest with you, is to have the public know that these meetings are available, and we briefly report on what's happening with each department that we hold.
They're on the website. They're on the website.
I, this, I, 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 I'm not, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. But what I'm saying is, if the public wants to know what happened in Mojave Desert, one block away, it's a public meeting, it has an agenda, it's advertised, same as this council meeting. They come to this council meeting to find out what's going on. They go to MWA, they go to VVWR, they go to the transit board. These are public entities that advertise that they're public hearings, they're public meetings, they're open to the public, they have recording secretaries, they have attorneys, they have a board, and they have minutes. I don't know what's missing.
Well.
Always advertising the paper.
We do have.
The daily press advertises every single meeting.
The city of Victorville does have a lawsuit, and it's VVWR. So I think it's very prevalent for our members if, you know, our community were aware of where these meetings were, what took place. Because when they come back and they look at our agenda, and they see if we're being sued, where our money is going, what information, just overall. But, okay, if you can put this as part of the policy, and I see that it's only a city expense requirement that you're required to speak out, I was just making efforts to be a little bit more transparent.
Yeah, and these are things that you could be asking our manager, you know, before we come.
Yeah, and I do. But as a representative of the public, I thought they would wanna know, maybe Monica would wanna be in one of those meetings to get more information. Maybe Ramiro would wanna show up over there and understand how our air quality is working. So I thought the local government would help facilitate this information. So when I.
We understand that. But when there is no problem, there's no need to create one.
So when I ask this to be on the agenda, we can, you can vote it down. I move to have this where we all briefly explain what happened, whether it's a one sentence, or it's just reminding the community that this is how we're involved, that's all I'm asking. So I made a motion, and if it's silent and it doesn't come through, we understand that it's gonna tie on the floor. There's no issue.
Well, there is an issue. Because you just referenced a lawsuit on VVWR. You were briefing executive session. And you know darn well, you can't talk about that, neither can we.
So I reference.
That is correct.
I reference what is on the public agenda. Anybody knows about it. Everybody knows that we have a lawsuit if you read this. So I'm trying to help make connections for the public that we're here to serve you. And if we're here and give you a sentence, hey, we have nothing to hide. I don't see the issue. So if this gets voted down, which I didn't get a motion, right?
Correct.
No motion, so it dies. That's it.
And for point of clarification, there is no lawsuit with the VVWR.
So then what, what is it, since it's not a lawsuit? Litigation?
It's anticipated litigation. There is no lawsuit.
So I misspoke. It's anticipated litigation.
Okay. There's no need to make a motion in D5. We move on to D6, 39th Amendment Law Enforcement Contract Number 94-909-A-39. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council ratify the 39th Amendment to Law Enforcement Contract Number 94-909-A-39 for the period of July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, and authorize the mayor or her designee to process all documents required for the agreement pending approval of the 2017-18 budget.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, if I could give a, just a very brief explanation as to why this is on the agenda. We had a discussion at 3 o'clock at the budget hearing about potentially adding two more, one more, I don't, we don't know yet, police officers to this schedule. And that may still happen. That's to be discussed in June. But the way the county requests is that the contract, as it currently sits, it is adopted by the city council, so that they can make preparations for their own budget for July 1. So assuming the council approves this contract, it would be contingent upon Victorville's budget being adopted, which I anticipate in June. And then if we make any changes, it would come back again with those changes. So this is sort of a procedural requirement. The way the county prefers to have agreements come to them is that they are already approved and signed by the agency they're contracting with. So that's what would happen, is this would be essentially approving continuation of the service as of July 1. And then any additions would be handled at a, at a later time. And most likely, if we requested it, any new officer positions likely could start July 1 as well. They typically have officers available, deputies available, either in the county areas or in the jail, who are ready for a new assignment, just waiting for a new assignment. So just wanted to explain why this is on the agenda now, ahead of the budget, and ahead of a final decision on the number of deputies.
Thank you. Any questions?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Item D7, sale of property by the city of Victorville to Pax Bell LLC. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the Board adopts Resolution Number 17-030 and approve the Director of Economic Development to execute any related transactional documents. and approve the Director of Economic Development to execute any related transactional documents.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Item D8, sale of property buying between the successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency and S.W. Harrison Enterprises, Inc. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number RSA 17-004, approving the sale of property more particularly described as APN Number 3090-431-07 to S.W. Harrison Enterprises, Inc., and authorize the Director of Economic Development to execute any and all transactional documents to effectuate this sale. Any questions? Motion?
I have a question, I'm sorry. This is the successor agency that's selling the property?
That's correct.
And the proceeds will go to the county for distribution to the taxing entities? All taxing entities or only the taxing entities that was part of the redevelopment property taxes?
It is the affected taxing entities that are a part of the underlying redevelopment project area.
That's what I thought, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Ms. Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Madam Clerk, just for clarification, I don't think Ms. Gomez is voting. Did you vote?
Yes.
You did? D9, Amendment Number 1 to Consultant Professional Services Provider Agreement with Ludwig Engineering Associates, Inc. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council approve Amendment Number 1 to the Consultant Professional Services Provider Agreement with Ludwig Engineering Associates, Inc. for the Line E01 Drainage Master Plan for a total contract amount not to exceed of eighty-three thousand six hundred dollars.
I do have a question, Madam Mayor. The, the City of Victorville is fraught with drainage channels that run from the southwest through the northeast or to the Mojave River. Eighty-three thousand is not going to get us much. Is this restricted to any particular area? It can't be the whole city.
This amount is specific for the study, and it would result or yield hydrology study of a particular location. So this is looking at a certain drainage contour, E01 is what it's referred to. And what we're attempting to do is, is figure out, because drainage funds are such a scarce commodity, not only for construction, but also maintenance, with these funds, we believe there's an opportunity through additional detention at the Dos Palmas 395 intersection to actually increase the size of detention, which could potentially reduce some capital needs for drainage downstream. Our drainage needs are much greater than this. There's a number of different drainage contours through the city that we're trying to manage and maintain. I think it's safe to say there isn't adequate funds to, to, to deal with drainage the way we'd like. But this is dealing with one particular contour through the town, and it's believed that the results of this study that this eighty-three thousand is paying for will help reduce some downstream improvements in the future.
Thank you.
Your motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gomez, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Item D10, Professional Consultant Services Agreement Website Redesign Project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the City Council approve a five-year professional services consultant agreement with Vision Technology Solutions for the Website Redesign Project Number CC17-055 in an amount not to exceed one hundred seventy thousand seven hundred forty-nine dollars. Year one equals sixty-nine thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars. Year two equals twenty-four thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Year three equals twenty-four thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars. Year four equals twenty-five thousand seven hundred twenty-seven dollars. And year five equals twenty-six thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, for a total of one hundred seventy thousand seven hundred forty-nine dollars.
Thank you. Any questions? Need a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Ms. Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Now we move on to public comments. We will have our City Manager's report.
After public comments, right?
Public comment.
Do you have any cards, Mayor Garcia?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, I do have.
All right, we reordered these items to keep all the council member items together, rather than having them split.
You're confusing me here because we changed-
Yeah, I changed the order. We apologize for that.
And I haven't memorized. Okay. E1, public comment on items of interest to the public. Madam Clerk, read the public statement.
This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. Per Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the council, not the members of the audience. This is a proficient, professional business meeting, and courtesy and decorum are expected. Please refrain from any debate between audience and speaker, making loud noises, or engaging in any activity which might be disruptive to the decorum of the meeting.
Thank you. I do have a couple of cards here. The first one is Daniel Polly.
Yes. I'm here today for my rental before.
Can you state your name and possibly your address?
My name is Daniel Polly. I live at 11418 Scotch Pine Way, Victorville, California.
Thank you.
Okay, my rental before I moved in was used as a makeshift kennel for the guys that the city animal control know. They know these guys well. They kidnap dogs off the streets, and they keep them. Well, while the house was empty, they were using it so the animal control wouldn't catch them with all their dogs. So their house is overgrown, it's nasty. I've got pictures. I've also got, from the state of California, since my property management said he didn't see anything wrong with it, code enforcement said he didn't see anything wrong with it, and he dropped it. Now, for the past month, we've been living in the living room with these dangerous gases. The carpet's falling apart, we're breathing it. Well, I'm on antibiotics, and it's really sickening. The carpet guy that came out says that this carpet is saturated. So for the past month, I've been beaten down the doors, coming around, trying to find somebody to care. And finally, one of the code enforcements read this piece of paper and realized. So she violated the owner of the house, which it took nine months to get a brand-new water heater, which was 1987. So I'm sure that the carpet is really old, and it is just totally scrubbed in feces, urine, and they cleaned it with, and you could see it with the black light. I've done the black light test. I've had the state inspector come out that's certified. And still, I, you know, it took an extra month from code enforcement dropping it. And now it's another month of waiting for this owner to take charge, either move us out of this dangerous place, because not only is the carpets messed up, you can tell by the amount on the carpets that are solidly, there's probably only twenty percent in each bedroom that is barely clean. The bottom of the carpets are falling apart, we're breathing in all the particulates. They're through our bed stuff, our stuff's out in the garage. It smells like dog urine, because when the rain came, it backed up against the house, it wet the slab on it, and underneath the slab got moist. It brought everything up. Now, I think, I think it's very unfair the way that I have been treated, especially by the city, and by the property management, that tried to say there's nothing wrong with it, and this and that. But see, we've been so ill that I stopped working in LA, okay, a year ago. I've been home more, so I'm feeling the effects. Plus, I started working out in the bedroom on the carpet. And once you see the pictures that I've got, you'll know how filthy it is. Here's the paperwork for you and the city.
Thank you very much.
Blanca Gomez, please. Will you take this for me? I was told by-
Have to hand it over to the clerk over here.
I was told by somebody to give it to you.
No, you have to hand it over here. The next one, I'm sorry, I'm not able to read it, or it's Vesna Lazic.
Good evening. My name is Vesna Lazic Paulowin. I live in 13639 Segal Drive, Victorville. And this is my first time speaking to council members. And I decided to do it because instead of venting my frustration to my friends, family, et cetera, to actually speak to you, who have power, and who can do something about it. Can you hear me, understand me?
I can understand you.
Yeah, I see some very expressions like what she's talking about. Anyway, I am here tonight because I would like to raise awareness of our public library, Victorville Public Library, their dire needs. First time I went to Victorville Public Library was a long time ago, when my daughter was a little girl. And since I value education and knowledge, I wanted to take her there, to introduce her to this wonderful place of learning. And of course, you know, that was disappointment. We went there, didn't come back, you know. I build a library at my home in meantime. So my daughter moved to college, and I decided to volunteer my time for something that I care about. So I went to the library, and I joined the Friends of the Library, a group of volunteers who work to promote the library needs and foster the community support for the library, et cetera. Anyway, as I volunteered, my eyes became more open, and I saw how inadequate our library is for our community. We have, our library has nine thousand square feet, and it's serving now a population of over one hundred thousand people, right? And Victorville School District, I believe seventeen schools. And it's nine thousand square feet of this windowless, depleted, sad place. I mean, sorry, I mean, we've been trying to do Friends, as you know, Mrs. Mayor, you open our computer. Anyway, thank you so much for listening to me. And please, let's all together, Friends and you as a trustees of library and everybody else, let's try to do something.
Ma'am, your time is up. I'm sorry. Thank you. That was the last card that I had. Anyone else that would like to speak? You have to come and stand here and speak. Please give your name also.
I was just wondering, the website that we refer to, is that your, this website?
The city's website.
Okay.
Yes.
Because I went on it a bunch of times, maybe, I come to these meetings, I'm a real estate person, and I come to the meetings as, you know, I'm on a committee. Anyways, every time I go on the website and try to get something like important, I'm not able to.
Maybe this lady right here, sitting right there can help you.
Okay, I'm just, it's just weird, maybe like too many people are on it or something.
Yeah, she'll, yeah, afterwards. Thank you, Sue. I don't have any other cards. And is there anyone else that would like to speak? No? Okay, then we will move on. Now I do have a report from City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. So coming up in June, Saturday, June 10th, a workshop on residential landscape conversion ideas, 8:00 AM to noon, right here at City Hall, learn how to convert your landscape into a water-wise and beautiful garden. After the workshop, attendees will tour the Center Street Water Conversion Demonstration Garden. And then June 17th, a week later on Saturday, is the Neighborhood Cleanup and Free Dump Day at the Victorville Murf from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. You can clean up your yards, dispose of excess trash, trimmings, bulky items, et cetera. There will be an insert in your bill for more information. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Now, item E3, I don't know what this is, but it's here. Recognition by council members.
This is the item Councilmember Gomez requested a month ago to be on the agenda.
Oh, the one that carried over.
And it's back on the agenda based on her request from back then. So she requested it as a recurring item.
Okay.
Yeah, if I may speak.
You're allowed.
So this item was put in place because there could be a time that we miss out on something happening in the community, an event that someone needs to be recognized, whether it's a nonprofit, a small business, or a bigger organization in our cities. That's how we get a lot of the majority of our income, to be able to supply all the services that some people speak here about public service, our police officers, and so forth and so forth. So this time around, it just so happened that I was able to attend the ribbon-cutting ceremony for Jimmy John's. We didn't have representation there, so when I showed up, I felt that that was a representation. I thanked Mark and Mike for bringing their business restaurant there. And I said, you know, I didn't bring a recognition certificate, but I'll make sure during comments from council that I recognize you and your brother for bringing your business here. And hopefully, we'll get something to you sometime soon. Because I know Loving Goods Office was there, gave him a recognition certificate. Will Scott, Scott Wilk, our senator, did as well. And so we didn't show up with ours, so I figured this would be the appropriate time. At any other division, if there's a recognition, there's no need for me to use this milestone to recognize community members and those that put efforts to bring a business to our community. And this time it did, so I just don't want it to slip out. So I don't know if I make a request, who the request goes to, make sure that Jimmy John's Restaurant gets their recognition. They didn't get one, and I don't know if I need to make a motion for that. I just don't know how we're going to be addressing that, but that's why this was the intent for recognition by council members.
So then, if there's not going to be any discussion, so then I guess I'm gonna, for the attorney, I have a question for you, since it's going to be quiet. I know there's a policy in place with ceremonies and recognitions. So in this regard, what is going to happen?
Again, there is a policy in place, and it spells out the steps. If you want to have something recognized as a whole procedure, I don't have it in front of me right now, but if you just follow the policy adopted by the council. of me right now, but if you just follow the policy adopted by the council, that's, you know, it's pretty clear and straightforward.
Yeah, so the mayor is supposed to recognize, if the mayor is not allowed, she wasn't there, if the mayor's not there, she would designate someone, or Mayor Pro Tem would go, Mayor Pro Tem wasn't there, no one was designated. So if we can bring that clarity to that position, maybe that could be added to a policy of some sort. I know we're not going to have a discussion on this, but if this item does get removed from it being here-
Well, let me tell-
I'm sorry, would you please not interrupt me? There is a municipal code 2.20 that still allows me the right to yield the floor and not be interrupted by anyone, and I appreciate that you would still abide by that as I yield the floor. So if this item does get pulled out, I'm hoping that the majority would recognize that our city thrives when we have and we recognize those that put their efforts into our city. And retail is a big margin of that, it's 40%. So I yield the floor, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
I missed Jimmy John, sorry about that.
Yeah, me too.
I think I made three other ones. But don't we have staff that starts with the mayor, and then the Mayor Pro Tem, and other council members, if they are not available, or how do we handle this?
You have a policy manual you adopted. Like I said, I don't have it in front of me right now, but it's certainly something that can also be addressed as part of the policy, it'll be incorporated in the policy manual. In fact, I think it's probably in the policy manual.
Well, it should be in the policy.
This particular ribbon-cutting happened at the same time as the agenda briefing for the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and I know Keith and myself were there. I don't know about when the request came in, I know that there's a certain time limit or time request per the policy, but I don't think anybody has a policy in front of them.
Well, the time came out and I committed if the mayor couldn't, I think the mayor did, and then they changed the time, mayor couldn't, and I committed, and then they changed the time. That's going to happen, and no policy in the world is going to take, I don't know, how many times, they changed it, three times, I think. Now, you know, I can plan, and all the council members here can plan, but if they jump around, it's up to staff to try to figure out what council member's going to be available. I agree with Councilmember Gomez, some council member ought to be there if we're asked. And I don't know what happened to this guy, but twice it was changed, and I changed my schedule twice, I couldn't do it a third time.
Nevertheless, we're all very proud that they're here, and we're thankful that they're here.
Sure, absolutely. Are they here tonight?
Well, but we have, whatever we give out, those things, we need to make sure that they get it, because most of the business people prominently display that. And I don't see it as a problem, I think it's going to happen occasionally, and if it's going to be incorporated into the manual, I think it should be, I don't see it on the agenda, because it should be taken care of at the time. Starts with the mayor, the Mayor Pro Tem, and then we have three other council members, and, you know, if all, if, in many essences, at the last two that I attended, it wasn't the elected official, it was the staff people from the offices that attended. So, you know, if our council member can't make it, we still have staff people that can attend. So, but I think that has to be in a policy to ensure that we do not offend someone who has gone to the trouble of investing in the community and having a ribbon-cutting, Chamber, by the way, has the ribbon-cutting, that's who handles it, that we should be there and should be thanking them. So if it's not clearly spelled out on a policy, it should be. Quite frankly, it's just too late to have a ribbon-cutting and then a week later, or a week and a half later, council talk about, oh, by the way, we missed it. I agree, that's not sufficient. So we need to make sure in the policy that we follow the current policy, and if we can't make it, that a staff member can take it. There are going to be times, because obviously, in the last two that I attended, there wasn't any elected officials there, they were staff people from the supervisors and the Assembly Office and the Senator's Office, all these staff people. I'd like to have elected officials, but if we can't make it, staff people could. So we shouldn't give up, just because the mayor, the Mayor Pro Tem isn't available.
Now, are the people, the owners of, is it Jimmy John's? Or Jimmy John's, are they here this evening? Ms. Blanca, are they here?
They're not responding to you, so I'm assuming they're not here.
Okay. Well, regardless, I do apologize that we were not able to be there because we had other commitments. I will personally deliver a certificate to them as mayor of the city. I will do that. I really do appreciate that they did, like Mayor Pro Tem said, you know, that they actually invested in our city and it's our duty to recognize them. And I do apologize, it was not intentional for us to not be there. We always try to make every single one that we can, but sometimes we have conflicting ones, and it's impossible to make all of them. So that's my apology to them. Anyone else? Okay, we move on to item E4, discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda.
When are we going to talk about fire?
We have a workshop scheduled for June 6th at 3:00. June 6th at 3:00, it's both the fire and the, hopefully, final budget workshop. Our intent is to talk about fire first, because it, to a certain degree, could roll right into the budget discussion as well.
Would you like to include the policy manual discussion at that workshop? It's going to make it pretty lengthy, but-
I don't think that's going to happen in two hours, no. I mean, if the council wants that, we can certainly put it on there, but my guess is we wouldn't get to it.
I think we're going to have to have a different time for it.
Yeah, that's fine.
We'll figure that one out.
I also have comments for that one, or agenda items.
I'm sorry?
I also have, I'd also like to add something to the agenda.
You want to add something to the agenda?
Yeah, I do. So when the majority votes or doesn't, this is their request. I've been out in the community for the several, for several weeks now, and time after time, I kept, I'm being asked consistently, when are we going to redistrict? And I say, well, I can ask to put it on the agenda for you, we can have a discussion and a possible action. I said, that's what I can do for you. So that's what I'm asking to be put on the agenda, results for redistricting and redistricting for the city of Victorville. So I so moved to have this on the agenda, I know this has to go through a vote. So it's being brought up right now.
Is that your motion?
Just to clarify one thing, I don't want to be the city attorney here, but the charter actually prohibits district elections in the city of Victorville.
So that's, that means that the city of Victorville will not redistrict, and I just need clarification.
We are not legally allowed to at this point, and that issue went to a vote of the voters, and the voters rejected amending the city charter to change and allow us to go to districts. So the voters have basically, in addition, prevented us from doing it. The charter prevents it, and the voters voted not to change the charter.
So then, the say-all means the city of Victorville will not redistrict because the voters voted no. Is that what I'm hearing?
The voters, no, the city charter prevents us from doing it, and the city voters did not vote to change the charter.
So in other words, it's dead.
Correct.
This is a dead cause.
Correct.
So it doesn't matter when people say, Blanca, we would like to redistrict, my response would be, we have a charter-
And the people have already voted not to change that charter.
I, that requires a clarification, when people say, oh, they want a district, more people voted that said they did not want to.
I can get a petition if that's what you're asking me, but all I'm saying is, when they keep asking, I need to give them a response.
There'd be people voted on it and said no.
A viable response.
That's the response.
You could have asked the city manager, and he could have told you that.
This is my public platform, and I want them to hear it, some of them are here today, and so that's why I'm doing it publicly.
May I ask a question of the clerk? Do you recall the voting percentages, yes and no?
I do not recall the specific vote, but it was a comfortable margin against measure X to change the charter.
And when was that vote?
That was in November.
Okay, so then that means that my motion died because of a lack of a second, so.
Madam Mayor, yes, I'd like to pull E3 from future agendas, as it's, the process or the policy is already covered, and in a future workshop or whatever, if that needs to be addressed, then we can. That's my motion.
I'll take it for discussion purposes. Do I understand correctly that you agree it'll be incorporated in the policy manual? Okay.
Well, it already is, and if we need to talk about it further on exactly how that policy works, there's a study session coming up, I believe, so.
Okay. On that basis, that it will be addressed, different, just a different forum, okay.
There's a motion by Mr. Negretti and a second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye, and I ask that my no motion be added to the minutes to say that this is not something that I asked to have on the policy, this was something that I asked to have permanently, but it's being taken off as a majority vote. If that can be reflected in the minutes, I would appreciate that.
The motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no, and Councilmember Kennedy
Now we have item E5, if I'm correct.
That's correct.
Reports from council members, and I'll start.
Yes, Andre, I have a question. For the public to participate in the public forum, is it mandatory to state their name and their address?
They do not have to legally do that if they don't want to, it's a courtesy so that we can able, that we are able to respond to any questions or issues they raise, and it's always been sort of a policy issue.
Thank you. I'm not finished, I still have a couple of comments. I've been in the, in contact with senior bicyclists for the last two consecutive weekends, and there were some notable concerns that were brought to my attention, and they were the following. On Lorraine and 7th Street, in the corner of Pet Boys, we have the pedestrian signal light, which is not clearly visible to the pedestrians. On Mariposa and Cottonwood, the International Pedestrian Symbol Signal flashes once, not giving any countdown time to cross, and at times, the pushing of the button operation seems not to be working. Also, on Bear Valley Road and 11th Street, the light in front of the animal clinic doesn't allow the pedestrian ample crossing opportunities. The short cycle length is under a few seconds to cross, requiring the pedestrians no long time to, for them to create a cross, in other words, for them to walk. Many of them are ignoring the signal and crossing during this gap of traffic, which is a negative impact to the benefits while we have an exclusive signal. So would it be possible for city staff to look into these three areas? There's more, but those are the ones that I was able to tag with the senior bicyclists to look at what these concerns are, and if we can fix some of this, or how this, we can go about it.
We'd be happy to. In fact, in the future, if anybody from the public or yourself have concerns, especially safety concerns like that, let us know as soon as possible. You don't have to wait for a council meeting to give us that list. We'd be happy to take a look at those things immediately.
I think that concludes our meeting. Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.